Welcome to the... Oh, I'm about thirty seconds early. Welcome to the City of Hutchinson Council Meeting for March 4th. I now call the meeting to order. Mary, before we take roll, I do have one announcement. If you are here to speak regarding Item 7B, which is the public condemnation or public hearing for the condemnation of 2100 South Bone Break, we will be deferring that item to a future date. You are welcome to stay for the meeting, but we will be deferring and not holding the public meeting or taking action on this or the other related item. Mary, please call roll.
Richardson.
Here.
Garza.
Here.
Fast.
Here.
Magers.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we are joined by Senior Pastor Craig Housefield from Trinity United Methodist Church, who will lead us in prayer.
Thank you. Let's pray. Holy God, tonight, we pray for the city of Hutchinson and for all of the hardworking people of this city who make it what it is. We thank you for the first responders and for those in this room this evening who work hard every day to ensure our safety and to make sure that that this city is all it can be. This evening, we pray for the recent tragedy. We pray for the owners of Stefanato Parts and for the continued work that's going into keeping people safe and working to see that this crisis passes. And so be with those who have responded, be with those who need your care in this time. We lift all of this up to you in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
We do have one proclamation for our first responders. There's a lot of you here. I don't know where I should stand. Chief and Chief and Sheriff, would you guys like to join me up here? Are there any other leaders from any of our other mutual aid partners? Or?
Yeah, we got all kinds. So if they just want to stand up and warn us if I drop, that would probably be great.
Whereas the safety and well-being of our community is essential in order to be prosperous and thrive, and whereas the City of Hutchinson's first responders, firefighters, police officers, dispatchers, utility and public works personnel courageously and selflessly responded to a critical gas main explosion on February 22 of 2025, and whereas these dedicated individuals put their lives at risk to protect our families, homes and neighborhoods demonstrating extraordinary expertise, bravery, and a commitment to serving others in the most challenging and dangerous circumstances. And whereas the unwavering response of our first responders embodies the very spirit of heroism, compassion and resilience, ensuring the safety and security of our community in the face of great adversity. And whereas the work of first responders is not confined to moments of crisis alone, as they are continuously, as they continuously demonstrate vigilance and dedication, providing an unyielding presence of care, readiness and professionalism every single day. And whereas it is essential to recognize and celebrate the vital contributions of our first responders, acknowledging their boundless commitment to protecting, serving and uplifting the lives of others. Now, therefore, I, Stacy Goss, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, do hereby call on all residents to join in expressing their heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for the heroic lifesaving efforts of our first responders and to honor their unwavering dedication to the safety and well-being of our community.
Chief Beer Hutch Fire, you know, that day is probably one of the, one of the most nightmarish things that can happen to a fire chief when you almost lose six firefighters. And it's a testament to their training, a testament to what we do. But that whole incident started out with the dispatch, right away with the dispatchers, giving us the information we needed to make informed decisions. It's Lieutenant Vaughn from the Police Department showing up at the, at the command post, just rocking it out of the park with evacuations and coordinating with the Sheriff's Department and KHP and all that type of stuff. Then you have all our mutual aid partners, South Hutch, District 3, and Beeler Fire Department, along with Travis came from and Adam from the Emergency Manage came down to give us a hand also. Like I said, then on top of that, DPW, the Water Department, everybody's there to give us a hand. It was a joint effort. And we, you know, we have a lot of equipment in town. We got a lot of things, but we all need each other. We can't do everything by ourselves, whether it's a brush fire, whether it's a, or a big commercial fire gas explosion type thing. It takes a lot of people and a lot of resources to manage that scene. And at the end of the day, I think the biggest testament to this group right behind us here is that there were no injuries through that disaster. And I think that's a testament to every one of their trainings, their dedication to their profession, and what each and every one of them do day in and day out to make Hutch a better place. Thank you.
Next item, please, Mary.
Item number five, petitions or monstrances and oral communications from the audience.
This is the section for oral communication from the audience. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and to items not on the agenda. Audience members may address items on the agenda when the item is discussed by City Council. Is there anyone here to address the council in public comment? Seeing then, we will move on to the next item.
Item number six, consent agenda.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about the consent agenda?
Is there really anything different on the Salt Hark Archery lease than it was last time?
No.
And does the same thing go for Extreme Crossfire Paintball? Okay.
I move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Item number seven, public hearing. Public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series 2025 for the YMCA project.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance, that was an error with the agenda. This does not need a public hearing. So we can move past that part and do we need to open item eight? Before we move to item eight, do we need to address 7B?
I have a suggestion for the council, just so we have it in the record, because it was a legal publication announcing that tonight would be the hearing date, that the council take action to continue it. You may not have the exact date tonight, but at least take action that it is continued and take a vote.
Okay, thank you. So we will not hold public hearing. We will simply defer to a future date.
You'll just be continuing the public hearing with notice at a later date.
Okay. I would like to make just a quick statement. We were notified that the owner of the property 2100 South Bone Break, Mrs. Gress, is absent and we encouraged her to be absent today, or I, I did via email, due to a death in the family. So we will move this to a future date. It sounds like we do not need to set that date at this time?
Not, not at this time. We can, we can figure that part out.
Okay. Well, I believe at the next meeting, we will have two absences. So.
We may want to talk about what date that is, because if you get to the April 4th meeting, then you're going to have two of those, those hearings on demolition buildings, because the, the west, the East Fourth Building, I believe, is scheduled for April 4th.
Well, I'll second your motion, Stacy, to continue it until we decide.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Next item, please.
Item number eight, ordinances and resolutions. A, consider an ordinance authorizing issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series 2025 for the YMCA project.
Joining us on Zoom are Sarah Steele from Gilmore and Bell and then Shelley Hammond from the YMCA. They are participating. In case you have any questions, they were going to be here in person, but due to the weather, we thought it'd be best to join via Zoom. So on November 5th of 2024, the council passed a resolution determining advisability of issuing IRBs for the YMCA, YMCA of 36 million. As a reminder, this is for the, their new building of 75,000 square foot. That's going to be a health, wellness and fitness facility that will replace their old facility. By adopting this ordinance, the City Council approves issuing IRBs for this project. If approved, the city will become the leaseholder of the property and YMCA will be the leasing. At such time that the revenue bonds are paid in full, that will be deeded back to the YMCA. Debt service payments and all related expenses relating to the IRBs will be paid by the YMCA. The city is not responsible in any way for this debt. As a reminder, the YMCA is nonprofit, so that's why there's not a payment in lieu of tax agreement included. Since the packet has been issued, there have been a few technical items that have been changed, but nothing of substance that, that needs to be brought to the city council's attention, just some cleanup items. So the city council must consider the ordinance authorizing issuance of the revenue bonds. City staff and our legal counsel does advise approving the ordinance. I'm, I stand for any questions or Shelley or Sarah are here for questions. If you have questions regarding anything, they can answer as well.
This is a question for the council members. Were any of you able to attend one of the sessions at the YMCA that they had just recently to kind of show off programming and stuff like that?
I attended it last year and assume it was the same type of deal.
Probably. I wasn't able to go, but.
I wasn't able to attend.
I think some got moved for a snow day, but I think the YMCA has proven that they're an asset to the community. And I've read this section of the agenda and I didn't have any questions. I believe that this is something that we very much expected and based on our presentations from last year, it all looks to be pretty much the exact same or as, as expected.
I'll move to approve an ordinance authorizing issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series 2025 YMCA project and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Next item, please.
Do we move on to new business?
Counsel, we'll just show items 8B and C as being rescheduled.
Okay.
There's no specific legal publication for that, but they are tied to the public hearing that we're rescheduling. So we'll just show that in minutes of being rescheduled. And if we have determined a date by the time the minutes are done, we'll insert that date.
Thank you.
Item nine, new business. Proposed draft of Chapter 16 Taxi Cabs of the Hutchinson City Code.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. Counsel, I gave you a, a draft about a month and a half ago regarding taxi cabs in the City of Hutchinson, looking for input from you. I got a little bit of input from Chief Burley and I haven't heard from any of you. So, but, but this is just, really just to, to see what direction you want us to go. City staff was basically of the opinion that we should either increase the responsibilities of operating a taxi company or to shelve it altogether. So really, that's where I'm looking for your direction on this. The proposed draft before you, it does change some things. It takes away the public hearing on the certificate of necessity for a tax cab company. That won't come before the council anymore. All of it will be basically handled by our city clerk in terms of the taxi cab owner and operation and also the licenses for the drivers. It has increased automobile liability insurance from our previous provisions and greater responsibility about the inspection of the taxis themselves, which we don't have much of currently. And so just looking for what you might have in mind and answer any questions that you might have. You're not going to hurt my feelings, no matter what action you take, because it's, it's really just your preference.
I did notice twice a year inspection on the vehicles. I, I know I didn't not receive a copy with the red line changes specifically. I don't know how hard that would be for you to get, but I mean, I, I read through it and I've tried to get some feedback from people who use the taxis, some feedback just from random people and they don't really seem to have a problem with, you know, having some safety in order. I just don't want to see our city staff being tasked with, with more things to do, such as that. I guess I'm comfortable if city staff is comfortable that we're not adding a person to run taxi cabs or to license them and keep track of it all.
No, that person is sitting right before you.
Huh?
I do it now.
Okay. Well, that's where I stand on it. I, you know, I did read it over, didn't know exactly how it compared to the other.
Well, and I can also tell you why you didn't get a red line copy, because most of it is not out of our current check.
That's what I figured.
Most of it actually came from the City of Manhattan. Because I, I went through a number of cities and looked at their codes on, on taxi cabs. Some, we had a couple of paragraphs about taxis and, and others had, like Wichita's, it's very, very extensive meters in the vehicles and all that kind of thing, which is really beyond what we would ever need. But Manhattan's was, I thought, had a lot of sound provisions in it, so much of it is incorporated here.
I read through this last time and refreshed my memory a couple of days ago also. It seems like there's enough in here with the increase inspections and the increased insurance limits, as well as background checks and enforcement, that this would allow HPD or us via HPD to enforce a bad actor to, to get them off the streets or to keep them from operating. I think, I'm curious, Mary, if you have any specific feedback in regards to if this creates a burden on you or if you think that this may even make your job easier because you actually have more to go off of?
I think it would be much better to have something to go off of. Right now, we really don't. And PD doesn't have anything to back them up.
Right. I, I had a conversation with one of the taxi owners in town who brought to my attention again that Axel's Taxi has been operating again illegally just about a week and a half or two weeks ago, but it seems like there isn't enough for HPD to enforce our current taxi cab code, because if a person in the backseat or the fare says, oh, I'm just a buddy getting a ride, then there's really nothing else in the code to enforce. Whereas this, with the insurance and the background check and all of that, and making sure that the right people are driving the right vehicles, I, I think this goes a lot further to protect, to protect our residents. So I really, I like this. I've read, in research, I've read Kansas City and Wichita and Lawrence. I don't think I read Manhattan, but now I have apparently, so.
The only thing I would mention is I, I think it should be an independent, I think we should specify that it's an independent ASC certified mechanic, not employed by the taxi cab business or not an ASC certified mechanic that wants to operate a taxi cab. Sign off on the room inspection, because that sounds like something I would do.
Mr. Brown, was Chief's, Chief Burley's input regarding anything about the background check part?
Not, not so much. It was more along the lines of to have a child seat required for children of, of that age, that there be a no smoking sign in the vehicle. It's banned in the chapter, but to have a no smoking sign in the vehicle and to have their rates displayed in the vehicle.
Okay.
How many taxi companies do we have in Hutchinson?
Three.
Licensed.
Three?
Three.
Three.
That's Axel?
No.
No.
Okay.
No. Hutch Taxi.
It would be four if you include Axel.
Okay.
Hutch Taxi, Roadrunner and Mama K's.
Do we receive all their information annually, like, you know, insurance, all that? I mean, is that, how's that monitored?
That's what I put in here, that there's annual licensing for the owners, so that we actually get that. Because currently, we don't.
And Paul, looking at the, on page 324, or I guess it'd be 16-6, the first section regarding convictions and this would make the, the driver, you know, the driver ineligible, but would this also make if the owner became convicted of one of these, would the entire company still be able to operate?
I will check that, but I think with the annual applications that we can address that.
And is there anything like mandatory self-reporting of conviction, or would that be on us to discover?
There's not a provision in there currently, but that could be created.
For both drivers as well as operators, owner-operator? Any other feedback from council? Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? I think the fact that we have three in town who are operating to the best of their ability proves that we do have a need for this. And because there's a need, I think that it's our duty to make these amendments and protect our residents from all of the things that could go wrong with taxi cab. Okay, so Paul, at the next meeting, will you have a red lined copy for us or what should we expect?
It's okay.
Or just a new copy?
Since it's all new, I mean, I-
Red line, I mean, red line of this version or just a new one?
Yeah, I mean, I'm ready. I'm okay with this. With the, with the changes.
Yeah.
And I'm just talking about the changes tonight.
Yeah.
I can, I can red line those. That's not difficult and put it in ordinance form. The only thing that you may want to think about is when it is applicable to the existing taxi companies. Because they're not going to meet some of these requirements currently and if we want to say, okay, this will be effective in six months and you'll need to bring yourself into compliance that time or if you want to do it at year's end, just-
When do we adopt the traffic regulation, September?
When we update those, usually get those in August. The UPOCs and the STOs.
And to your knowledge, there's no state regulation coming down about taxis or anything that-
No. The state doesn't regulate taxis. They do regulate Uber and Lyft. It's the Transportation Network Company Services Act and that's the part that they regulate.
I'm seeing no more discussion. I'd like to move on to the next item.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Item nine B, branding presentation.
Hello? Dave Zatella, Director of Strategic Growth. Jessica and I are going to present to you our update on branding. What we're asking for you today is to provide any feedback, if there is any. We've talked to some of you around branding so far and so we are ready to move that direction. So, just wanted to provide a final update of where we're at, the final product of this brand baby that we've been working on for a while. So, it's not that. It's not what you're seeing on the screen right now. That is not our brand. That would be bad. But I do want to talk to you a little bit about how this started. So, last summer, we got a grant from the Hutchinson Community Foundation to help us start on the work of a branding process. When I took this job as Director of Strategic Growth and had that communications component as part of the department, I thought it was really important to listen to some of the comments that internally from council and then community members have all shared with us about just the need for better communication strategy for our community, right? So, that's from internally, our department heads take a lot of pride in the hard work that the departments do every day, from battling fires to, you know, addressing some of the grossest parts of water infrastructure, infrastructure in our community. All of that is really hard work and it's work that we are really proud of. And then also just, you know, communicating some of the initiatives, some of the programs that we have as an organization and then giving you the tools to have better communications too with the public. So, that's all part of this discussion that we've had. We need to take ownership of some of the work we do, need to do a better job of communicating the work that we do and then keep the public informed of some of the initiatives and programs that we have. One example of that was just a different approach we took to communicating our snow activity during the winter, right? So, in the past, we maybe made some updates here and there about some of the progress on snow clearance, but this year, we took seriously communicating to folks from the beginning. Here's what you might see when a snowstorm happens and then just intentionally, as there were updates coming up with our departments, providing those to the public so they were aware of that. So, it's not just about a look, right? It's, often people think, "We just need a new logo. We need a new identity." That's not what this is about, though it is a component of what we're doing. It's really about a strategy of communicating to people better and an identity. The look of the brand is an important part of this. So, we've had this strategic priority of addressing our communication strategy and improving the look of our communication strategy. So, through that process, we conducted a lot of interviews with internal staff and key stakeholders and then we did some reviews with some of you council members to see where we were at and kind of get some feedback from you on our branding. We also looked at other cities. What are other cities across the state and across the country doing and how they communicate to their citizens? So, we looked at their logo, yes, their, their identity, but then maybe some cool ideas that they have around communicating. Is it a newsletter? Is it social media? Do they have events? What is it that they're doing for their communications aspect? Probably the most exciting part of this work, of this process was a internal retreat with our department heads, our key leadership team, in which they got to kind of communicate to our consultant, Bauercom, on what the needs for communications were for their specific departments as an organization. And then we did some exploration of who they thought the city is and what our voice is as an organization as well. So, I always want to make clear, this is how we talk about the city as an organization, but at the end of it is how we connect with our citizens and they're part of our organization as well. But ideally, we're working on what's our message internally and how do we communicate to the public? So, we have a brand foundation from that and those visual identity options, we selected the best fit to work for us. Based on all of that work that we did, we came up with a few concepts and then we selected our final one. So, this just talks a little bit about kind of the phases of this process. We've done the discovery and the definition process and now we're in the development process. If we're good to go after this conversation, our next step is developing an annual plan for communication, strategic communications plan. So, where we ended, as we were doing this work, we really try to think about who we are, what are those concepts of who we are. So, this brand identity of a team captain is what you'll see in our look and our visual identity that you'll see. But at the core of it is this idea of Team Hutchinson. So, I'm going to read to you because I think it's really important to you and for the public to understand kind of what our messaging is and the aspiration behind this work. Welcome to the city of Hutchinson, also known as Team Hutch, where every resident and city staff member are part of the same team, working together to make Hutchinson a thriving, connected community. In Hutchinson, government isn't separate from its people. It is its people. Every resident plays a vital role in shaping our city and Team Hutch is a shared commitment to building a stronger, more vibrant Hutchinson together. Whether you're a lifelong resident, a newcomer, or part of the city team, your contributions to Team Hutch are unique and valued. From organizing local events to sharing a friendly smile with neighbors, every action counts. City staff are here as your partners, providing tools, support, and resources to help you succeed. But ultimately, it's all of us working together who make Hutchinson shine. This is Team Hutch, one team, one community, building a brighter future together. So, that's at the core of what we're trying to do is say, we are one together, one Hutchinson together and the work that you do out there makes our community better, but we've got to do it as a team. That's at the core of it. So, when you look at the brand identity, it is a little bit different than what we've done. And believe it or not, one of the greatest insights from this process came from our city attorney, Paul Brown. Now, you're thinking, "What? The city attorney had a good thought around branding?" He did. As he was looking at this, he passed us and said, you know, "We were worried about maybe going a little bit too different than where we've been" and he said, "Guys, this is the time to say something different about ourselves, to be exciting, to be energetic." That really takes us in a different direction. And as an organization, you've noticed, we're just, we've been moving and shaking things and really trying to execute. The city manager has a different language for execution, but I'll save you those words for you.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Jessica Woodyard, Public Communications Manager, City of Hutchinson. So, I get the pleasure this evening of bringing to you the new logo and brand identity look. So, you may have seen this look somewhere around town before. You may already relate to it. You might have seen it from our flag or from the water tower, the star there and the colors of the blue and yellow. We also have the usage of light blue, black, and orange that you'll see a play of. So, these are different examples of how the logo might appear, but we wanted something that the community would already recognize as City of Hutchinson, that already looks and feels like us. So, this is what we have. Through a very thoughtful process, we were able to brainstorm on how our community thinks about us. So, when you think of Hutchinson, what do you think of? And we came up with these eight S's. So, we have our sun that is represented through our flag. We have space in the cosmosphere, the sand hills, the state fair, streams playing in that tradition to our river that we currently have. Sports, we got a lot of feedback that we feel like a sports town, that we're very sporty. It relates to young families very well. So, you'll see sports and salt. And once a year, we become Smallville. So, with all of these different patterns, you may not see them all in the same place at the same time, but you'll see different usage and different variations of these. And the first time that you look at these, so the first time that you look at salt or when you see it out in public, you may not recognize that that is salt. But when you do find that out, that's just a little nugget, a little tidbit that's going to make you feel a little special about, that you know an inside information about our city, about our community and then you're going to tell someone else and you're going to tell someone else. So, then that will come naturally, that people will begin to see all of those different elements and all the different patterns play together. Okay, this is an example of how you may see our patterns and branding out in public. So, around town, you may see this mural. And with it, you can see the really bright vibrant colors. You can see the usage of the patterns. And with that, internally, we really feel energetic and vibrant and we want the community to come along with us to feel that. So, you'll see those bright colors and big patterns. I also really love that with the star, we've incorporated all of those different elements, all of those different patterns to come together. Also, our city manager really loves this, so you may see it all over town. Here's an example of what our website could look like. You'll see the usage of the patterns, but mainly here, we want to talk about our voice, our brand identity. So, we are a team. We're all in this together and bringing the community along. So, your city, your team, your Hutch. Let's go. You're right. Another mood board here. This is our voice. You may not see this, these exact words, but it's the feeling that it gives you and how we speak to our community and how we speak about ourselves. So, built by grit, run on heart, and powered by you. These are examples of different social media tiles or different media looks that we might use. You can see the softer play on the patterns. They're not so heavy on the patterns because we're focusing on the messaging here. Also, you'll see the usage of Team Hutch. When we use that Team Hutch, we're talking about ourselves as an organization. So, internally, we're talking about our own people. Meet the MVP. We're going to highlight someone, a staff member, or join our team. We're hiring posts. So, a little bit subtle on the patterns, but the consistency there of that star. So, eventually, we hope to get to a place that when you see just that star with all of those different patterns represented, you'll know that that is City of Hutchinson. Different branding materials. We have a button here of City of Hutch MVP. We also have this really great idea of a brochure. So, this is a welcoming brochure. Welcome to Hutch. You're on the team now. An idea of possibly when someone comes in for the first time to sign up for their water bill, that they can be given this brochure about other services that we offer or things to do in town. The possibilities are really grand with this. We could also use this internally about orientation, about what the City of Hutchinson, who we are, talking about our voice again and providing that when someone is onboarding. City of Hutch MVP. So, this would be for staff to wear internally to have that pride. That is something that we also got a lot of, like Dave spoke to through those interviews. There's a lot of pride internally and we want people to know that, that we're proud of what we do and who we are here in Hutchinson. Okay, thinking outside of the box a little bit. So, again, just another example of how we could use these different patterns and not only in branding material, but in our spaces. So, here's an example of, if you haven't had the chance yet to visit our new utility billing area, they have a new space and right now, this wall is blank. And, you know, what, what a better place when someone's coming in at that point to give them a little energy, talk about who we are. So, there we also see the City of Hutchinson with the different patterns in the star. A strategic, strategic priority of ours is that we are a tourism town. We have visitors here in town year round. Why not, what a wonderful opportunity for us to display who we are and what town they're in and show that, that pride and energy that we want our own town to feel, but also people visiting our town. We've talked about gateway entrances a few times, so here is an example of up sixty-one, we have the H-U-T-C-H in those banners, giving you a visual of what that could look like.
All right, so I'm going to go back. That's also going in the city attorney's office, by the way. Let me go back to this. So, you know, as a next step for us, one thing we do want to be clear, what we want to do is ask everybody to change all the logos and all the looks of everything that we have. So, the logo that you see behind us, you might not see that change immediately, but we're slowly going to transition some of the things that we do use, like our social media accounts, maybe some of our print materials and slowly, you know, we get a new, a few trucks a year that have to be wrapped, so we'll upgrade those as we come, as we order new business cards, we'll upgrade those as well. So, it's only the cause that are already happening. There might be some changes on, like we said, those flag bowls and maybe some of the signs outside our facilities, but we're trying to be strategic about where we create those changes so to not create huge expense on the city. What we'll also do is just have a conversation internally about that transition. And then, one thing that has been really important for some community partners and as a, an organization, is talking about community pride, plays narrative, community branding, having a conversation about that as a community with the public, about what they think about Hutchinson, connecting some of these shapes into values and narratives that they have about our community. I'm not naive to think that doing this process will make everybody love Hutchinson immediately, but it's making an attempt at telling a better story about ourselves. You know, you talk to any outsider from our community who's moved in and is living here and they're usually our best advocates for our community. They're usually pretty impressed with the community that we have, with the amenities available, with just, we have a really good town and a lot of good things happening here. But we're not often good at telling that story. So, this is setting that foundation for the future work of our organization and then as well for the community. But this is work that has been in the work for a while. We've got some feedback from you and we're really excited about transitioning all of our work this direction and just owning our communication strategy, helping our different departments with communication and with marketing, having conversations with our tourism partners about this sort of thing. And so, we're really excited about this process and continuing the work and, you know, Jessica has done a lot of great work in getting us to this point. So, happy to hear some feedback or questions that you have. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
I have two pieces of technical feedback. So, you guys showed me this, I don't even know, a week ago or a couple of weeks ago. And I really like it. I've been thinking about the salt panel since then. And salt is square, not round, and I just can't get that out of my mind and I had to say something.
Got it. Thanks.
So, if it changes, fine. If not, I, I will let it go, but I just wanted to mention that. But I love this. And then the other piece of technical that I noticed was- And then the other piece of technical that I noticed was in the, I believe in the next slide or the slide after that where it shows the, this is fine, the star that has the iterations and, and the Smallville and State Fair are missing from this panel. So I was just curious if those would be reincorporated.
Yes, there will be. The Smallville and the State Fair were late additions of just other iconic recognition things about the community. So that's why you're not seeing them show up in this, but they will be eventually incorporated into that.
Cool, I love that.
Has there been any discussion with our partners in regards to like Hutch Rec or the Chamber in regards to possibly teaming up a little bit to try to brand similarly to this?
Yeah, there's a lot of work on path right now because we've communicated that we've, we're going through this process and then eventually engage a broader partner coalition, if you will, and then public to kind of embrace this and figure out where this fits in. But yes, we're having conversations with the Chamber, with Hutch Rec, with the Community Foundation, because it's been a shared goal to just narrow down our community identity or brand identity. But we are working with all of those different partners. So they have this, they have access to the brand identity. And we might not ask everybody to say, you have to look like us. That's just not an expectation, but at least playing from this brand identity that we're creating for the community.
Mayor and council, other things that would piggyback off of this work here would be to correct or fix a lot of the city branding across a lot of our own city-owned facilities. So for example, at our airport, it's, it says Hutchinson Municipal Airport, but we're a regional airport. At the Hutchinson Public Works Facility, when I was here for my, for my interview and I was just driving around town, I'm like, oh, is that a county public works facility? Is that the DOT? It wasn't clear. And I could guess and assume that it was the city, but I didn't know. Same thing with the Hutchinson Zoo. You can go out to the sports arena and you don't see any city branding, but we own the building. Every other entity is established but our own. Same thing with the Dylan Nature Center. And so I, with, as we're going through the city branding process, I, I would like for our City of Hutchinson, our new logo, to be on there. That way, people know when they're going into a facility that it is the city's. And I, that plays a part in, in the community in many ways. And it was a very innocent statement, but we were at the Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner Event. And I think in the Meadowlark, in the Meadowlark Building, we had a booth set up and it was just a pop-up park. It was turf, like a fire hydrant and a bench. Chief Beer, Dave Cecil and I were standing there for quite some time. And then eventually we started meandering around and we were asked, oh, does the city have anything? And we're like, yeah, we're the pop-up park. And the comment was made, oh, I thought that was Hutch Rec. It's innocent statement, but I think we would be doing ourselves a favor if we, if we took more pride in the assets that we have. And part of that is having our identity throughout the community. And also too, for any other business, their brand is consistent, whether it's Tractor Supply Company, Hutch Community College. It's very consistent that you know where you're at. And I think we need to start doing the same. So I wanted to throw that out there as well and I would take any questions that you may have. But as we go through that process, we wouldn't be doing it all in one shot. You just corrected over the years, so.
I think what comes to my mind, I like it. The only thing that I see is missing, what makes Hutch popular in my point of view, is our cosmosphere. Maybe you can have a rocket up there with an astronaut there. Don't change it, but put them in one of your blue sections. Or N double A's basketball tournament. Those are big things in Hutchinson that we have. There's some way we can integrate that into one of your blocks. I don't know, but that's the first thing I noticed when I'm watching this is that a lot of things we have here are great that we have here.
Yeah, so I, I think that's part of kind of the, the nod to some of the shapes and patterns. It's not super explicit of what it is, but if you pay attention to the second tile there, you'll see space. And so, you know, that, that's a nod to the planets and, and the shape of, of that. So we're not really specifically saying it's, you know, a rocket, but it is about our space identity because that's a really important part of this. Then you also see the sport on the blue tile at the bottom. And so that is also about, you know, we, we have all these tournaments. We have a really strong institutions about, with their sports, but also the NJCAA volleyball tournament, track and field. So we're not specifically going to collate the NJCAA tournament or the 3A basketball tournament, but we're saying through those shapes, even though they're not super obvious, that that is what we're nodding to in that instance. It's kind of like a little inside joke between us that now you know what those, the symbols behind that are.
You all have received my feedback, I like it.
Thanks, Greg. All right, thank you so much, council.
I, I do want to say one thing, and this is really a, not anything negative to you, but I think that, and as a person who works in, in the marketing space, I love this. I love the plan, I think it's really strong. And it's important for the community and for the employees to kind of rally behind. But I think when we talk about taking pride in our buildings and taking pride in our parks, the best way to do that is to take good care of them. And I think that we've been lacking in that area. I get complaints about downed trees and curbs that need repainted, sand blasted and repainted and that the city as a whole isn't welcoming. This is a great plan and these graphics are really beautiful. But this doesn't improve when you drive in on Fourth Street. This doesn't improve when you drive into town. And so those are the really bigger things that we need to keep working on and keep tackling. And I just foresee that the community.
Having a reaction.
Having a reaction to this.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think that's been in the back of our minds all along and, and that's a conversation we've had as a leadership thing, team, that if we're going to, we've got to get really good at the basics, all right? And, and so you've seen some of that work already, layering all of our Targeted Approach Neighborhood Improvement Program, right? And making improvements to the streets and the sidewalks and the parks all together in one place. But I, I think that's some of the, to credit to the city manager, improving our efficiencies everywhere, I think will be really important, to your point, right? We've got to take pride and it's, it just isn't about a look. That, I mean, that falls flat and doesn't advance, you know, really having a better satisfaction for our citizens. It's getting good at the basics and I think all of our departments are working really hard to think deeply about that.
Absolutely, thank you. Would anybody like to speak in public, the public comment section for this item? Seeing then, we will hear the next item.
Item nine C Reno County Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Partnership Presentation.
Hello. How do I make this go forward? Perfect, thank you. All right, hey, Jackson Swer, 210 West 20th. The Executive Director for Startup Hutch and here to talk to you about the R.C.E. group. Uh-oh. There we go. Do, would just want to say, I wasn't going to come up during the public comment part because I knew I was about to be next, but you can see I have your logo already in there. Or at least a slightly different version of it. So I'm a fan. Many of you will know, but maybe not everybody does, that I was involved in the process to do the flag design, raising a flag steering committee. And while the flag is a very simple image on purpose, flags should be. Go watch Good Flag, Bad Flag if you disagree with me. Look that up on YouTube. But part of the idea behind the flag was that it was a very remixable design. And so when I see things like all of the different uses of the star, bringing in some different colors, incorporating all the different elements of the community into that, all the S's, I think it's really solid. So I'm pumped too, as a big advocate for the flag, so I just wanted you to hear that. Okay, now to what I'm actually here to talk to you about today, which is the Reno County Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Strategic Framework or Strategic Plan or Action Plan. You will probably hear me call it any of those different things in the course of the day to day. I'm currently serving as the Executive Director for Startup Hutch. We are a key partner and the convener of this partnership, although the partnership has been being convened by the Community Foundation for a lot of the past as well, also under a different name, the Reno County Entrepreneurship Task Force. So as we move through some of the history, I'll just try to keep all of that in mind. Do want to raise an issue that many of you may be aware of. If you've read the Hutchinson Tribune, I'm about to leave Startup Hutch. So this is a little awkward because we're talking about the next five years and it's not going to be me. But I can speak to about, speak to you about the history of where we've been and kind of how we got to this plan and where we're looking forward to in the future. And I'm really excited about all this work. And it started at a high level and then move on to a little history and then get in a little detail, not too much in the weeds so as not to spend too much time. Maybe. Thank you. Here is our vision. Why do we do this? Why do we spend time working on entrepreneurship? This is about partners coming together and trying to include everyone from economic development, community development, our financial institution partners, which means banks and credit unions. I've got banks on my notes, but I remembered my credit union people, so you're welcome. Other business services, I'm thinking like attorneys, accountants, insurance providers and entrepreneurs themselves. So the partnership is about including all of those people and we're driving towards a thriving economy, which means at least to me that there are opportunities for all people to build wealth and to have meaningful work for those who aren't willing to be entrepreneurs themselves. So how do we create an ecosystem that provides opportunities for everybody? This is our mission. How are we going to do this? We work together, we celebrate our wins and we grow the economy together. And what we need to do to accomplish this mission and vision is a lot. We need to do a lot of different things and we try to be experimental. So we're always trying to true, to do different things as well. We set off on a long strategic planning process. Actually, in late 2023 was really when I think the process started, but we did most of it last year in order to get to this 2025 through 2029 strategic plan. The plan has the following guiding principles. So these were really pulled out by our consultant on the plan because when we were looking through all of the strategic goals and the different kind of actions that we wanted to do within them, he said, well, you've got like one of these in three or four out of every category, basically. Anyway, in other words, these were coming up over and over again. And so rather than having different strategic pillars in every step that references these, we pulled these out and said, this is informing the whole plan. So promoting transparency, embracing and fostering diversity, meeting people where they're at and leveraging natural resources and assets. So diversity is really important and I think our approach to this is really good and important too. We talk about diversity in a lot of different ways, from the people that we work with to the areas of our community that we work and the areas of the county and also the different types of businesses. One thing, I, I need to get the updated stat on this from Deborah or where Deborah needs to get it too. But at one point in time, a few years ago, we were the 11th most diverse county economy in the country. So we have a lot of different kinds of businesses here. How do we take advantage of this diverse economy that we have and continue to grow that? Like, we're already really resilient, how do we grow more? Okay. The other thing I want to call a lot of attention to here is the leveraging natural resources and assets because this reference, this references an orientation that we have towards the work, which is trying to build upon what we have rather than looking at what we don't have and trying to fix problems. I think that this orientation towards growth and towards what we want to have and building upon our assets is really important. This is a little bit of history. Okay, so really, we had a big aha in 2017 and 2018 and 2019 in some research and planning in a, what was called the Reno County Entrepreneurship Task Force. And that started as just a small group conversation that ended up in a large town halls and some experiments that were run, a survey, and then finally a five-year action plan from 2020 through 2024. That beginning of that plan in 2020 saw a rebrand of the Quest Center for Entrepreneurs to Startup Hutch and hiring me. We also started some new programming, also this little thing called COVID happened and threw everything for a loop. So 2021 was a lot about figuring out how we were going to pivot, what were the new problems that businesses were facing? And also there were a lot of new resources entering the system as well. So how do we deal, deal with that? In 2022, we really refocused and re-strengthened. We brought on another staff, new staff member, kind of did a staff transition with the old director, Dave DuKart. And I transitioned into a little more of a leadership role then. And we also did some work around narrative. In 2023, we did a lot of diagnosis and engagement. Specifically, we partnered with the Kansas Leadership Center and the Kaufman Foundation on the Heartland Together Project. That initiative included a diagnosis event with many people from our community and then 20 people participated in a three-day flagship program that generated a lot of experiments that we then tried in 2024 and then we proceeded with putting together this plan. Just in a little bit of summation, oh, and I prop, props. We won some awards in 2023 and 2024 from our statewide partner, Network Kansas, for this work of entrepreneurship ecosystem building, for our collaboration and our navigation. Do want to reference that we're, we have partnered with BauerCom as well. I know the city is partnering with them on their branding. They've been key to our success. Also wanted to give a big shout out to my partner in Startup Hutch, Christopher Acker and his work at Salt City Sound, which is what helps us with this podcast that we do, The Hot Seat. And we've really bolstered our partnerships around mentoring through partnerships with SCORE and Network Kansas and the Small Business Development Center at WSU. I've got representatives from the SBDC coming up monthly now at our local library, so you don't have to go to Wichita to visit. Okay. This is a quick flyby on the goals and the action steps and I'm not going to go into the weeds on all of it. I think you have the full plan in your packet. So, but we're talking about the high-level goals here. Navigation, reducing the risk and barriers by meeting people where they are. That's a lot about talking about, thinking about, how do we get more people into the whole system that we have? We're also in the middle of transitioning our client relationship management tool, but that's really in the weeds on the technical stuff, but that's part of how we're starting to do that already. Two is existing business expansion. This is really the pillar that's about a lot of our collaborations with the Chamber. So they were really involved in the action, creating of these action steps. Deborah was on the small group team on our board who helped to do that. Three, younger, youth and under-resourced startups. We've caught a couple of different categories of entrepreneurs here who are different but related because they don't necessarily have all the resources that they need right now in order to start a business, but we want to get them inspired so that they will want to start businesses in our community and that they will get the resources that they need going. Number four, collaborative entrepreneurial supports. This is more thinking about regional and statewide partnerships. How do we build a bigger team and bring more resources into our community? And five is business transitions because we think that the existing businesses that are going, that have, let's say, older owners who are looking to transition out sometime in the next five to 10 years. This has been a priority for the last five years. We've helped a couple of transitions happen. It's going to be a priority for the next five years, I'm sure. There are a lot of these transitions coming. And Startup Hutch can play a role, sometimes no promises, but sometimes we can help create buyers for businesses by giving people training through things like our Entrepreneur Business Basics Jump Program, which kind of teaches you how you might need to run a business, but maybe you want to start something that somebody else is already running. Occasionally, we can play Mac to make it there. Anyway, I'll get out of the weeds. One final note on the goals and action steps. The short-term action steps included in the plan should be completed in the next five or three years and the long-term ones in five years. So we built in a little bit of time for the new person to get these things done. This is a little bit about metrics. I'm going to say here that I think these might shift over time and especially some of the goals related to fundraising that we included before were things that we wrote down before we knew I was about to leave. So some of those things are probably going to change. But one thing that I do think we're going to look at for sure is to exceed the average number of dollars loaned out and associated matching amounts compared with 2020 through 2024. And I didn't include that here on this slide, but our goal for the first plan was to loan out a million over the five-year period. So $200,000 a year out of the loan funds that we can access. We ended up lending about 1.4% and the total investment as a result of that, including the matching funds, is over $5 million. So I think the goal is basically, let's, let's beat that again in the next time around. For a lot of reasons, we had access to a lot of capital in the course of the last four years. So I think it would be a good accomplishment for the next five years to match what we just So I think it would be a good accomplishment for the next five years to match what we just did. Not to pat myself on the back too much. Here are some of the partnerships that helped us do this. And just want to quickly speak to the process. Want to thank Carrie Mayhew, who's actually back in the audience, and we'll be speaking to you later. She convened a lot of meetings. You see on the left-hand column here, a lot of different people were involved in this process. We got folks from all over the county, different aspects of our community to participate in this process. They give us a lot of good feedback. We also have listed here the partners in that Reno County Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Partnership. Carrie, we took all of the input from those meetings with Carrie and a lot of narrative that was generated out of that. And then we dumped it onto a consultant who filtered it down for us. And then we brought it to the Startup Hutch Board, who helped us do a reality check for what can we do and what timelines? And then we, that was then sent back to the consultant and then processed into what you see today. Here's a few more of our partnerships. Just want to close with a, one more note that Startup Hutch is really built on an ecosystem-based model where we are a part of a partnership. So this entire partnership is vital to our work. I want to thank all of our partners again for everything that they've done to contribute to this plan and to our work in the last five years. And also want to give out a small call to action. So if you're a local entrepreneur, you're somebody who works in business services, you're just somebody who might be interested in economic development and community development, maybe you're a policymaker sitting in front of me today. Now is a good time to come and get involved in this partnership. We are moving from the planning part to the, well, let's say the GSD part. And so if you're the sort of person who wants to go that direction, that now would be a good time to go ahead and get involved. You're welcome for that, Emrico.
Appreciate it.
All right. And just one final thank you to DJ Geering of Health Strategies and Geo Solutions. DJ is a former employee at the Reno County Health Department. He's up in Park City, Kansas now, but I just want to thank him. He did a great job on the plan. Any questions for me?
Well, I don't know if I ever get to say this to you, but thank you for all you've done for us. I've been around a long time and you've been there. And I appreciate, appreciate what you're doing. I know you can't probably tell us what's going on with you later on, but.
Well, I can tell you that.
Okay, well, spit it out.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to go, I'm going to go be the publisher of the Hutchinson Tribune. So there's a group that's going to buy out the Hutchinson Tribune from Michael Glenn, the young high school kid, and take that and expand it, turn it into a weekly paper. So we're going to do that. I'm going to help, help on that project. So doing a little entrepreneurial venture of my own.
Appreciate it. Will you still be around Facebook?
Oh, I'll be, I'll be around.
Are hats required to join the Tribune? Is that?
Yes, I thought I would. You know, I had to, had to. Actually, just I really need a haircut is actually the thing.
Well, I think, I think everybody on council has owned, currently owns or will own a small business at some point. And we definitely understand the need to support our small businesses and all businesses, but many of them start small and, and grow to large businesses. So reading your strategic plan or whatever you want to call it was really enlightening. I, I enjoyed reading some of the history. And even though we've had some of these businesses start here and move on, like Kroger, for instance, I think the entrepreneurial spirit of Hutch is alive and well. And, and this just kind of flushes all of that out, so.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Stacy. Not in the slides, but included in the packet is some history of the entrepreneurship in Reno County with some narrative written by John Green, formerly of the Hutch News. And yeah, so thank you for calling some attention to that. I know you got to dig through the packet to find that, guys, but for those of you online, take a look. It's a good article. Anything else?
Do we know who's taking your place?
No, we do not, but I'm glad you mentioned that as well, Steve, because the job is posted. And you can find it on hutchcc.edu, I think backslash jobs, but don't quote me on that. Go hunting on the website. So yeah, we're looking for applicants right now to replace me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number 9D, Community Foundation Presentation.
Hello. Good evening, City Council. I am Carrie Mayhew, Director of Strategy for Hutchinson Community Foundation, and I'm proud member of Team Hutch. Excited to go after my friends, Dave and Jessica and Jackson and for the Community Foundation and our Fund for Reno County to be a part of those projects over those years and helping get to this point. So what I'm going to share with you tonight is kind of on theme. I'm, I'm here to share the results, the analysis of the Hutchinson data that came out of our first year of the Love Where You Live Community Empowerment Initiative. And I think you will hear some good things that reinforce what, what is going on in the community. And we didn't plan this, but I'm going to give some of the place science that Dave referred to a little bit ago. So why does it matter if residents love where they live? This initiative was informed by place science. In 2008 to 2010, the Knight Foundation ran the Soul of the Community Study in 26 cities where they had newspapers, including Wichita. What they found was that of the 10 areas studied about a place, social offerings, aesthetics and openness matter most in driving community attachment. And the places that had the strongest community attachment had stronger economic growth, even during those years of the recession when they ran the study. So loving your place is an economic development strategy. For the Love Where You Live Initiative, we're leaning into openness and social offerings as strategies for engagement. Meaning, we're attempt, we've attempted to make everyone feel welcome and included in the process. And we offered a chance for people to get together to make new connections and have their voice heard as part of that. What you heard earlier from Dave about the city's identity is leaning into the aesthetics, and especially Stacy, what you said too, even more elements of place science. Because when a community brings its story to life through events and beautification and physical and verbal signs, that even further drives place attachment. So in June 2024, Hutchinson Community Foundation launched Love Where You Live, a three-year community empowerment initiative that centers resident perceptions, dialogue, and community empowerment, or clap, sorry, and collaborative action. Alongside community partners, our goal is to provide Reno County and communities and the county as a whole with data and a process that will empower residents to make positive change and boost community pride. Since last June, we have engaged residents through a survey, community workshops and grant opportunities, a process that we will repeat for two more years. In January of this year, we announced changes to the Fund for Reno County Grant Making Process that better align with what we learned about Reno County priorities. Our Impact Cycle One priorities with proposals that were due last Friday included a community catalyst grant opportunity to support projects that do the work to improve community engagement, communication, confidence and enthusiasm with a maximum grant award of 2,500. And then our second impact cycle will have proposals due on August 15th and will consider projects with plans focused on community and economic development with a maximum grant award of $50,000. Tonight, I'm here to share our analysis of the Hutchinson data and feedback we received in the first year. So we have partnered with Ohio-based Innovation Economy Partners to administer this benchmarking survey that they have been refining with communities across the country for the last decade. And we are administering the survey in parallel to McPherson County and Western Kansas, whose community foundations are also leading similar resident engagement initiatives. Over six weeks of outreach, we received 723 responses from Hutchinson residents out of 1,022 overall in Reno County. Surveys were distributed widely via social media, news media, email, onsite with groups and meetings and at events, and we had paper copies available at the library and City Hall. The survey respondents were predominantly long-term residents, homeowners and well-educated and employed individuals. We did struggle to get responses from men, youth under 20, renters and non-white residents, which we learned is a common challenge in other communities and even in our own community with other engagement initiatives. We asked for names of local leaders that respondents admire, and we heard 285 different names in Hutchinson, showing a quite large and diverse selection of who residents see as leaders. And at the end of the survey, we asked people to leave their name and contact information if they were interested in being part of community initiatives and conversations. And 201 individuals, or one in four, did so. And so now we have their contact information. We can engage them in opportunities to contribute in different ways to this community. So one thing, for example, we did was send out the opportunity to apply for city boards and commissions. The survey data was collected, again, by Innovation Economy Partners, paired with secondary data and published in a benchmarking report for each community. The Hutchinson Report and other community reports, as well as the overall Reno County Report, are available for the public to download at renosurvey.com. That benchmarking report shows both the facts of our community in terms of metrics, but also informed by the survey, how residents feel about their community and what their perceptions are about it. I do want to make it clear that we had enough responses to, for the data to be statistically significant and valid. But again, this is just a snapshot of the perceptions of the 723 people who took the survey in 2024. Since we have committed to this process for three years, we will use this first year as a benchmark for showing how we move the needle over the next two years. And one of the appeals of working with a partner on the survey was so that we would be able to benchmark our communities, not only to themselves, but also to others in Kansas and across the country. So for instance, I can tell you that Hutchinson and McPherson do not share the same order of priority issues, but we do share the same top priority metric. So our residents are sharing the same interest in, in the needle they want to see moved. So we see opportunities to learn from our partner communities and share information over time. And then for the second year, we will have an additional digital tool where we can filter responses and priorities by demographics. So we'll be able to share with you like what youth prioritize or what they're paying attention to, what their perception is on the community versus the whole. After the benchmarking reports were published, we invited residents to workshops in each community. Our purpose was to generate dialogue, inspire leadership and spark collaboration to make incremental progress on the identified community priorities. We held, we held four different workshops in Hutchinson in the span of a week and had 79 residents participate. They started in small groups, making sense of the resident perception data in the survey. We wanted to flesh out what they thought might be behind the answers and the results. Then we asked them to further articulate their priorities, generate bold ideas that might make progress in the next year and reflect on which individual, what each individual could do to contribute. This is the summary of the priorities for Hutchinson specifically. The left two columns are from the survey and the right column is from the workshops. You'll see in the report that attract new businesses and remove and renovate blight were a very close one and two, which is consistent with what we heard in communities across Reno County. Basically, every community in Reno County is saying, we want more businesses and we want to remove blight. You all have been making moves in these areas recently, as you know, and your staff, addressing blight, large and small, investing ARPA funds into childcare and housing, partnering and leading on the housing needs assessment, innovating your approach to infrastructure improvements at a corridor or neighborhood scale, and investing in economic development, entrepreneurship partnerships and initiatives. So I hope these results give you some feedback to keep going in those directions. You'll see also that the metrics residents said they are paying most attention to are all economic, followed by community confidence and enthusiasm. I think more of that, that heart work, how people are, are feeling connected to the community. In the workshops, the question that we asked that got to these answers was, what one opportunity or priority could make the biggest difference in our community in the next year? And if this community was 10 times bolder to make progress on that priority, what big idea would you recommend? You can read all of the ideas in the workshop recap that is on renosurvey.com. But the main themes of the ideas centered on housing development, wages, blight and community engagement. So over the last few months, I've been working to analyze the data from the survey and the workshops. And I have five main themes that I'd like to share with you tonight. Essentially, five asks that residents are making of us as civic leaders. Number one, support ALICE. So in the workshop, we asked participants to react to the economic perception data from the survey that asked how they feel about current business and employment opportunities versus future business conditions, employment opportunities and future income. It's kind of hard to see here, but that's what that graph is. By far, the number one response from people in the workshop was that the negative perception on current business conditions is likely due to low wages. And many people mentioned ALICE specifically. ALICE stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed, who we used to commonly refer to as the working poor. The United Way of Reno County has taken a leadership role here and across the state to educate our community about ALICE and houses the ALICE data for Reno County and Kansas. What the data tells us is that 42% of Reno County households are ALICE, including 13% of that who are in poverty. And this is 3% higher than the Kansas average. When we pair that data with the median household income, we see just how far we are behind the state in $20,23 from the census data. In one of the workshops, two ideas that tied with the most interest were, number one, jobs that offer a livable wage and salary and allow time to be spent with children. The big idea was, can we have jobs that pay well and have time with our kids? And number two, new companies that pay above an average wage and more programs for workforce development. Another takeaway from the sense-making on that same graph was how important visible change is to residents. Again, this goes to what Stacy was saying earlier. On the negative perception of current business conditions, people attributed that to the blight they are seeing across town, the schools and businesses that are closing or have closed, the empty storefronts and the negativity they're seeing on social media. On the reverse side of that, the graph on the previous slide showed just how much optimistic, more optimistic survey responders were about the future compared to today. We asked workshop participants why they think that is. This time, they pointed to the signs of progress that they're seeing. The increase in childcare centers and slots, the construction of new YMCA and hotel, the news that Evergy is building a new natural gas generation plant here and beautification reinvestment efforts such as through the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative. What I hear them saying is, give us more visible signs of optimism to outweigh the signs of decline. I think organizations like ours know the work being done behind the scenes that will lead to a lot of exciting things and visible progress. And so how can we make more of that behind-the-scenes stuff and progress visible today? In two of the other workshops, the top ideas that came out of that bold, bold question, bold ideas question was related to civic engagement and access to communication. One top bold idea was, go door-to-door personally to invite every adult resident to become involved, provide their input and invite them in a concrete way. Get a large percentage of the adult community mobilized. In the other workshop, it was ease of access to housing and community information, one central hub for applications and information. In their sense-making about the survey data, we heard a lot of people reflecting on whether they feel welcome or included at a table or in a room. Back to that sense of openness from the soul of the community data and study. They were unsure if their voices mattered, if they can make a difference, if the extra time and energy it takes to get involved in community challenges would be worth it. At the same time, they asked for more opportunities to feel a part of progress. They pointed to the city's town halls that it held in the fall and said, we want more of that. They asked for more frequent updates when it doesn't look like anything is happening. And they asked for community leaders to be more visible and present in different spaces. Again, the city is already on this path, especially with the work that JK and Jessica are doing in the Strategic Growth Department. And so I hope you interpret this as kind of more down that path of civic engagement and communication. Another thing we heard as an answer to multiple questions was the request for continued collaboration toward a shared vision and long-term commitment. Some workshop participants said that the collaboration and leadership they've seen happening between community partners in recent years has given them hope for the future. You'll see here that our community gets pretty high marks for execution, but the confidence falls when it comes to residents' perception of whether we know where we're headed and if we have a plan to get there. Now, again, we all know that we have multiple plans to follow, from the comprehensive plan to the downtown master plan to the aquatics master plan. But the community is telling us that in part, they're not sure what those plans are and if we're actually executing them. So what do these plans add up to? What is Hutchinson and what do we want it to become? Are we all rowing in the same direction for the long haul? And finally, we heard a lot of pent-up energy for doing things differently. Now, bold here doesn't imply a silver bullet idea, and those aren't the ideas we heard. The bold ideas were largely shifts in mindset and approach. The bold ideas were largely shifts in mindset and approach, again, doing things a little differently. Again, you are all ready and your staff practicing this in multiple ways. You're taking on housing in a new way, you're pursuing star bonds, you're considering new approaches to incentives, you're actually asking the question, what's holding us back, and making changes based on what you learn. So I encourage you to keep listening, keep questioning the way things have always been done, keep asking yourselves whether you're even asking the right questions, and keep pivoting toward what makes progress. So lastly, as I said earlier, this was just the first year of a three-year commitment to this process. In 2025, we will administer the survey again in September and October, and we hope to get even more diverse participation to make our data even better. And we'll keep inspiring leadership and collaboration among residents to make progress on community priorities and ultimately increase community confidence and attachment. Long-term, Hutchinson Community Foundation aims to leverage our capital to make continual progress toward a strong, diverse, and inclusive local economy, healthy, connected people and neighborhoods, and a place with a culture of shared ownership, pride, and belonging. Thank you for your partnership on that journey for the long haul, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Could you please repeat the website that people can go and look at?
Sure. Yes, renosurvey.com.
Thank you.
Yes.
I attended one of the four sessions that you spoke about. Sorry, ended, stepped out and go to the bathroom. And it was really great to see the collaboration and just people talking to each other. I wish we had more events like that, and I think that you guys heard that same sentiment after probably every single one of the events was, I wish there was a different way, just to connect with people that doesn't require a membership anywhere, doesn't require everybody to ascribe to the same religious belief, that there'd just be a place where people can do things like that. And so kudos to you guys for facilitating those groups. I think everybody made really strong connections with people that day. I've dug into your data just a little bit, and thank you for addressing the shortcomings of your data as well as the strengths. We only know what we know, and I think knowing who we miss when we do studies like this is really important. But I, you've given us all, me at least, a lot of food for thought to help guide us and also to seek feedback and how to be genuine. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Might say something quick based on Carrie's conversation and then tie it to our strategic plan. So as you know, we've been going through a strategic planning process for a while, and we're also having all sorts of conversations about all the plans that are out there, right? So this is one of those, and Carrie mentioned a few more. As we were having a conversation, and based on other conversations I had last week, when we met with our strategic plan group from Wichita State, one of the things they mentioned is what they've heard from staff is that we have all sorts of plans, and it's just overwhelming trying to figure out, you know, which priority they can focus on and then what priorities do you focus on, right? And so one of the processes that we'll follow after this is, we send them most, almost all of the plans their way, and then highlighting the Love Where You Live Plan because of the community engagement process, and then they're going to come back to you eventually and say, here is what, and by the way, like if you look at specifically plans or processes like the Love Where You Live or workshops that we had last year, we hear the same thing over and over and over again. Folks are telling us the same answers. What I love about this, this one is that it's also telling us where we're doing a good job and where we need to continue doing that work. All of that to say is that our, as part of our strategic planning process, they'll take a look at all of that and then inform our priorities going forward so that we all can kind of get a plan together where we're saying, this is what we're going to focus on for the next three to five years. And so I'm really excited about that, this process kind of helping inform some of our internal strategic planning process, which ends up being, you know, what we do for the community, the work where we invest our time and we invest our resources, also hopefully making your life easier when you're making decisions.
Any other discussion from council about the Community Foundation presentation? We will move on to the next item.
Item number 10, report of city officials.
Mr. Garza, you go first.
Yes, it's my place to go first, isn't it? Well, you guys don't realize, citizens of Hutchinson, what kind of, two weeks ago, whatever it was, the disaster we almost had here. We had gas under the streets, we had everything when, that Saturday morning, I'm sitting here and take a day off, relax a little bit about eight o'clock in the morning, my phone rings and I've seen Enrico's name on my phone. Now, Enrico's gonna call me at home, it's not good. And Enrico said, Mr. Garza, we just had an explosion in the south end of town, a building's on fire, and it's not good. At that time, I decided to go down there and look at it. You don't understand how many amazing leaders we have in the city of Hutch. They stopped a disaster coming. The disaster came from them working with KP&L, disaster came with they working with the gas company, disaster came with the great employees that we have. I've seen our employees at work firsthand, from the water department to the street department to the fire department to the police department. I've seen our leaders at work, and I was proud. They stopped, we had gas under the streets, gas that could have been blown at any time. But for your leaders that you have hired in this town, they stopped that disaster. They stopped that disaster because anywhere in that street, you had to seen the fires coming out of the cracks of the street. There's actually fire coming out of the streets. Why? Because you had gas under our street. We could have lost our whole south end of town, but for the leaders we have in this town, they diverted that. They stopped the leaks, they, they took it south end of town from four or five blocks each way and told them they had to leave. With that kind of, I am very, very, very proud of the leaders we have in this town. You don't understand, I got up there and the mayor even was there, we sat and walked the streets and watched these, these great, great employees from the sheriff, from the police department to the sheriff going to work. And the citizens, I'm not gonna leave the citizens out, because the citizens came and gave these people food and water and drinks. So at that time, it took the whole city of Hutch to come get this done, to save our town. We, we missed a big thing. It could have blown up the meat factory that was over there. It could have blown up, if that meat factory would have went, it wouldn't have been good. It wouldn't have been good at all. I witnessed a lot of employees going to work. You gotta be proud of the people we have in Hutchinson that represents this city. They diverted a disaster that could have happened. And I thank you, Mr. Rico, for your leadership, you did a good job. I thank you, Mr. Police Chief and the Fire Chief, you did an excellent job. We all worked together, and it wasn't me, I was just looking at the situation. We, me and the mayor were there, we were just watching it. So I am proud for the people we have as leadership in this town, and I thank you. For that, I am going to get my meeting going. I've got a 426 East B this Saturday at nine o'clock. It's gonna be at the church there. Now, forget my Spanish here, viva, viva no Eva, and I think it is free life, free?
New Life Church.
New Life Church there on the, on the corner there at nine o'clock. I'm gonna resume my meetings there. We're gonna have everything we need for that. Come to the meetings. I've been getting a lot of calls, where's my meetings at? And I said, I'm finally gonna get it going this Saturday at nine o'clock at that church. Be there, gotta come to the back of the, in the back of the alley, come to there, to the basement, and on the side there, there's some stairs, you go up there and come there, and we'll be back in business again. Let's get this town going, and I'm gonna tell you something, with the leaders we have, all this, this town's going somewhere. This town is going somewhere. So it was something else for me to watch that situation. This is the second time Mr. Enrico called me in the morning, another time we had a missed problem on Third Street with the, that, all that stuff in the house, he called me again at three o'clock in the morning. I told my wife, and I'm laying there beside her, she's, what's going on? I said, at three o'clock in the morning, we have no kids that are partying right now, so it isn't good. It wasn't. So, but anyway, this town is going somewhere with the leaders we have. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Richardson?
I don't know how I'm supposed to follow that up. Ditto, I guess? I would say I do, I want to note, the only thing to add or addendum to that is the patience of the people that have properties on the south side of town that were affected by evacuations and clearing out space. I know it's an inconvenience, it's a hardship. Please understand why. I mean, it's pretty evident why. I'll try to make a convenient outside of there. I don't really have anything else to add other than that.
Mr. Fast?
The Woody Seat Freeway is beginning. Please be patient with detours and, and all the things going on down there. I would echo Mr. Garza's thoughts. I was, there's been four fire responses in that area of town within probably a six-block area, and I've been, observed three of them. And, and, you know, we talked a little bit about getting back to the basics. We've found some things that maybe are lacking and things that we can improve on there. It was partly due to zero degrees in the weather, the weather on one particular fire. And, and so we know about those, we'll, we'll make efforts to continue to work on our infrastructure. I will say that, been in different towns, and I still maintain our streets are pretty good. I really, I think, I think we do a good job with our street department, and, and I do appreciate, on the one fire that I was at on West Avenue B, the fact that we had other departments there helping on what was a routine fire, a very serious fire, but a routine fire, and they were very helpful because of the cold weather. And, I mean, I saw them doing things that was way out of their purview, they weren't even there to be doing these things. And I appreciate, Chief, your patience with me, watching and observing, and, and hopefully I didn't interrupt too much. With that being said, we need to continue to address blight. One of those houses that burned down should have been removed years ago, probably. There were people living there that probably shouldn't have been living there. So what do we do moving forward? Please continue your efforts, staff, with that. Thank you.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a big list to follow, so I guess, I just want to, I guess, echo everything you guys said about the disaster that we averted, it could have been way worse, and I guess that was a question I kept asking Enrico, I said, any injuries, anybody not make it out? That was my, my main concern was the safety of our citizens, and I just want to commend all of our first responders, fire, police, everyone involved, it was just, just doing their jobs to the best of their ability and, and just, just didn't, it could have been a lot worse, that's just what I want to say about that, I just want to thank everyone for that. So the one thing I, I've had a couple of things that I have a couple of questions about that I've had community members reaching out about, our, our safe sidewalk program that I know was supposed to start in the fall, I didn't know where our progress was on, on that. I've had some people reach out to, I guess it hadn't been taken care of yet, and so I didn't know where we were at in the process.
The process for that, we're doing inspections for the south side of town, and we will be, as part of the old program, we'll be honoring the improvements that needed to be made on the north side of town. So that'll happen in construction season, so sometime in the next couple of months, we'll get that taken care of.
But they're still working on the to-do list that was started, they're still pouring those sidewalks.
Correct.
Okay. The next question I had was on the noise ordinance. How is that working? I've had some, I guess, emails, questions from community members as well on the noise ordinance. I just wanted to know how that was going with HPD, when they respond out to calls or whatever in regards to that, if that's working well with what we've done, or if there's things that need to be changed or addressed on that issue.
I'll defer to Chief on that.
And Chief, by all means, if you don't want to speak off the cuff tonight, you could totally come and give us a more prepared presentation in two weeks if you prefer.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have an opportunity to dive into that, make sure that I speak what's actually happening.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there, and I appreciate that, I just don't, people had some questions, so I'm just following up on that. So, and then I do want to say thank you to Enrico for always keeping all of us in the loop, doesn't matter what time of the day, morning, night, evening, weekend, it doesn't matter, he's always calling, texting, emailing, keeping us in the loop of what's going on in our city so we can pass on to our community members what we know. So I do appreciate that, Enrico. That's all I have.
Thank you. I will echo the remarks of the rest of the council when I say thank you to all of our first responders, our mutual aid partners, just a heartfelt thanks from myself and from the community. Woody Seat Freeway, it's unfortunate that this construction is overlapping the, the road closure, but it's an unnecessary, it's a necessary evil that we just have to live with for the next couple of weeks until one detour gets picked up. And one thing that Mr. Weeby said during one of our press conferences was that these marked detours are really for out-of-town traffic and truck traffic. Residents will likely find their own way around the closed streets, so hopefully people find one that works for them, but there are two other bridges that are open, so whatever works, works. Over the past two weeks, I had the honor of speaking to a couple of civic groups, the lunch crowd at Elmdale Senior Center, individuals from the Skyriders Organization, Ambux, and the Region Five Fair event on Saturday night. That event was really fun. It was sponsored by the Kansas State Fair and the Board, and they had, I don't remember if it was five or six different states that came to Hutch, they did tours, they did education events, and then they had a dinner and just a night of fun. So it was really cool to be invited and involved. People really love fairs, that's true everywhere, not just in Hutchinson, Kansas, and all of those people were, were really awesome. Mr. Fast, you talked about residential blight. We had a meeting, Mr. Vegas, Chief Burley, some city staff, and some local nonprofits. And the first concern was, what do you do when those houses have people in them? And so, you know, that, I am proud to say that the first concern was always the, the people, not the properties, and it's unfortunate that people do live in the conditions that, that some do, and so what resources can we provide? How can we connect them? Is that through nonprofit? Is that through police? So it was a really robust conversation, and as the council and staff make steps toward commercial code enforcement, the residential piece will be coming into play soon. But it, it's a little bit different consideration when you take into the fact that people live in these homes and possibly children live in these homes as well. Something that came up quite a bit over the past two weeks as I was out in the community and talking with people was the Memorial Hall project. I encourage everybody on the council, and I'm not calling anybody out because I think we all had a, a good conversation, but I just encourage everybody to engage with anybody you can about Memorial Hall. People are really talking about it, and some people are excited, some people are not. There is a sense of loss in the community around this project and this property. Maybe later this summer, if we have bids, if we have renderings to compare, perhaps we'll already have some, a gauge on the public sentiment prior to going out and formally engaging with the public, but I think that will help us be more confident in our decision to help us make the right decision. to help us make the right decision at the right time. And it's also always possible that we don't do anything at all. And so, I just encourage everybody to keep an open mind and listen to the community. I will say that a while before I came on council, and then we wrapped it up when I came on council, was the chicken topic. I can't think of anything that we talked more about than chickens. And it was really a rather unimpactful. By the time it was all said and done, prices had peaked and valued, and then peaked again and leveled out. And by the time we actually accomplished the ordinance, it kind of seemed like it really wasn't as big of a deal, and it wasn't truly a benefit to the residents. So, we can talk about Memorial Hall for a long time. I mean, there's, there's no action required. I just want everybody to keep an open mind on, on that. I guess my point is, sorry, I got like no sleep last night. My point is, I don't know. I'll think of it later.
You hate chickens.
I actually don't hate chickens. I'm thinking of getting chickens, and now I have to go back and read the ordinance because I do want chickens.
Could not agree with you more about chickens.
I just want us to kind of slow-roll the Memorial Hall Project. I think people got excited thinking that we're going to tear it down tomorrow, or we're going to move forward with doing something major. And I know that wasn't council's intent, but that can often be misconstrued in our lack of media. So, with that, I would open this up to Mr. Vegas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A few items, and then I'll be turning it over to IT for them to give an update. I also want to echo a lot of the sentiment that happened around the explosion. And especially days after the event, the more I learned with a lot of our federal partners in town, how, how much worse it could have been. And those thoughts kind of, kind of mess with you, especially when you're right there. And so, a true thanks to all of our first responders and the leadership that Chief Beer had in kind of rallying everyone together and setting, and setting up the incident command post was instrumental in preventing something way worse. We had a lot of difficult conversations and a lot of pressure on us to fix issues that we didn't cause. And so, I appreciate also the mayor and all of her efforts in taking a lot of the interviews, especially during the event, just to allow staff to focus. We do put a high priority on making sure that the community is engaged, and so I do appreciate the mayor stepping up to do that. In terms of residential blight, we do, we will be having, kind of like the other things, we'll be presenting a policy to you all to look at. I'm very excited about this one. We'd be partnering with Interfaith on it. You know, there's monies attached to that, so that'll just be a part of the budgeting process. But I'd like to get these to you guys now, so we have time to really contemplate that for the future budget. And finally, for Memorial Hall, I, we put some numbers together on this discussion. And really, I think we made a, an initial mistake in the discussion by calling it a park when really it'd be more of like a plaza, or like a town center, or something like that. But the essence is still the same. But assuming if we were to rehabilitate Memorial Hall and invest the 5.3 million into it, and assuming that we'd still have that $100,000 annual loss, after we make the initial investments of installing an HVAC system into the facility, we could reasonably project that it would be an additional $94,000 in expenses. And so, if you push that out over a 20-year period, it would be about 9.1 million as a total investment. If we go the plaza route and assume for demo, as well as putting in some type of other amenities within it, about 3 million, plus or minus. And if we assume that it would be a yearly maintenance cost of 20,000, that over a 20-year period would be about 3.4 million. So, the difference between keeping Memorial Hall and doing the investment or going to Plaza, over a 20-year period, we would save 5.7 million by going with a Plaza. And so, I'm trying to attribute numbers to that discussion. Again, these are reasonable assumptions that depending on the type of engagement we get with the community and what they want, those numbers can go up or down. But I do want to put some numbers to that discussion. So, and also correct the fact that Memorial Plaza sounds a lot better than Memorial Park. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to IT.
Real quick, where are we at with closing the street up there? We get plenty of the gas place?
Ian May?
Yeah. No, where it's open, we'll repair it.
More than likely, it'll still be like that for a couple more weeks. So, I was going to do a field check this morning, but I got sidetracked a few times. So...
You know, one thing I want to mention, you mentioned it being open trench. The fact that, and I think this speaks to our leadership view as well as Public Works. This is, the explosion and the tearing up of the street really exposed stuff that we hadn't seen, our own infrastructure that we hadn't seen in probably decades, if not longer. And so, it allowed us to have a conversation with Kansas Gas about safety and kind of moving some of those things around. So, it might take a little longer for us to get the street patched and open, but that's because we're taking our time to do it right. Moving some things so that there's more space in between pipes and clearance between things. So, I just, I think that was important to mention.
Well, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jeff Roberson, Information Technologies. Todd Davis cannot join us tonight due to illness. But we do want to talk about a couple of things that we've been working on recently. One of them is the audio upgrade in this room. The sound was really bad with the old system. When we did this renovation, we kept the old amplifiers and mixers. And using HOP Sound out of McPherson, we recently upgraded the mixing system and, well, the amplifier just recently got installed. And you may have seen Joseph over here with an iPad. We've been tweaking the sound and conversing over Teams just to make sure the sound is really good, not only in the room, but also on the live stream. To improve sound quality, you may have noticed the speaker up here is only for sound coming from the computer as well as the podium. The sound in the room, those back speakers, as well as the hallway and in the conference room encompasses all of the sound. And so, we really feel like that's a really good improvement for this room and this facility. We've also made it simpler. We have a simple touchpad over here, so it can be configured with the touch of a button for city council meetings or for other meetings that we have in here. We've also recently replaced those two TV monitors, same size. They don't look a whole lot different. But we are also looking at replacing these other two, and that should be coming along fairly soon. Another thing we've been working on, you mentioned the Woody Seat Freeway. Joseph, one of the guys in the office, claims he doesn't like climbing water towers, but he climbed Water Tower One last week. And we put up a camera there. And so, we're able to produce a time lapse of the construction on the Woody Seat Project. It's still, we started this, I think, Thursday. You can see the timestamp in the upper corner, which goes away fairly soon. But the work has already begun, and you'll see the traffic die off. And you'll see the power of the light poles being taken down here shortly. So, this is kind of a fun little thing that we've, we've done in the office. And we're planning on updating this weekly with an updated time lapse on the engineering website. So, that's something we're looking forward to, sharing that work with everyone. Another thing that we recently turned up Monday is a program called City Works. And City Works is replacing our old Lucity system that we've had for years. It was running before I started 14 years ago. And it's a work order and asset management system. And it allows us to track all of our assets within the city so we know when a water line's been replaced, if a fire plug, or whatever assets we have out there in the city, how often we've worked on them, how much it costs, and things like this. So, Phase One is, as I mentioned, went live Monday with Public Works. And that's going to be with water and sewer, and so they're already using that. We're planning on having the rest of the system implemented by the end of July and 1st of August. That will allow us to also expand into the water treatment center, as well as wastewater. And we'll be able to track, you know, pumps, maintenance, and things like this. And hopefully, that'll be a benefit to those folks there. Other than that, those are kind of the things that we wanted to touch on, that we've been working on. Do you guys have any questions?
What all do you monitor or track with the City Works software?
Oh, my gosh. It's going to be everything. Lucity tracked all of our lateral assets. Mark might be able to touch a little bit more on that. But all of our lateral assets within the city, all of our water lines, sewer lines, fire plugs, lift stations, all the things that make the city work.
And I'll also offer too that, say, whenever we make a repair to our water line, it'll be our intention that we'll get a GPS shot on that. So, then that information will go into the system so we know how often we've made repairs and stuff like that. So, there's going to be a lot more intentional focus on our underground facilities. So...
Also, recently, engineering purchased some new software, which I can't think of the name of it right now, but allows them to look at assets underneath the ground using augmented reality. So, they can take an iPad and look through the iPad to the facilities underground. Also, as they're building out new facilities, they'll be able to take pictures of that and also see those overlays, which will hopefully make Jack's job a little bit easier as we're moving forward with that.
So, is that based off of GIS information?
Yes. Everything is, GIS is the primary data layer for all of that. So, all of our assets have a position within the city. A pump lives somewhere physically. So, we know where those assets are at as we make those repairs or put in new ones.
I got a real quick question. I know at one time, Chief, we put cameras in at Avenue A, Park Avenue A. How's that coming? Is it doing good? Is it doing good?
Yeah, those cameras are monitored over at PD. Chief might have a little more data on that.
Yeah, that's a great question, and I did want to speak to that because I think that they've been a huge benefit to us. We have those cameras up 24/7 in our command center, and it allows the officers that are working up on that desk to monitor the situation and even see it throughout the night, even when we don't actually have bodies there at the park. I think it's greatly reduced. I don't know if you all had the opportunity to make a trip there underneath the bridge and seeing all the graffiti that was in there. It was constant. But since then, we've had very minimal, if any, down there. It's also helped us handle people sleeping in the park, leaving trash in the park. It's really given us a good opportunity to keep it looking clean and pretty in a place where people do want to go and spend time. So, I think the IT department on that, and they should be committed for that because it has helped our officers tremendously to keep that park the way we want to see it.
How about that other park way out there on, by McPherson, that one?
Orchard Park?
Orchard Park.
Yeah, same thing up there too. That's helped us a lot as well. Obviously, when you're lacking in manpower a little bit, that tech, that extra technology helps us keep an eye on those places that we want to keep as clean and as welcoming as possible. Yeah. And that was, that was, that was these guys too, so they should get all that credit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please, Mary.
Future agenda items, union contract amendments, RHID public hearing, Pepsi contract. Item 12 is the executive session.
Mr. Vegas, how long? 15? Okay. Do you guys want to take a five-minute break before we go into? Okay. So, I move to recess into executive session pursuant to the consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA 75-4319B2. In order to discuss legal issues involving city real estate, the open meeting to resume in city council chambers at 7:50 PM.
Second.
Thank you.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Cost?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.